It is December 20th, 2021, here at the City Council Chambers of City Hall for the regular meeting of the City Council. I'll call the meeting to order and ask Carla to conduct the roll call, please.
Go for it. Is absent Bergen?
Here I am.
Drinkhouse?
Here.
Angus is absent. Myers?
Here.
Roffey?
Here.
Snyder?
Here.
And our guest councilwoman, Gretchen, is with us again this evening. Welcome back. Glad to have you here. We're all joined with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. We'll move forward with item D, the approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to do so.
I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Drinkhouse, second by Bergen. Council discussion, if any. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries. Item E is the approval of the minutes. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the December 6th, 2021, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Roffey. Council discussion, if any. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries. Item F is public comments. For items not on the agenda, please limit your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Any public comments this evening from anybody that's joined us. Seeing nobody in your eyes, we will move forward with the consent calendar. Item G. Following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item 1 is the purchase of a 2022 half-ten pickup truck from Rolling Ford LLC of Shell Rock, Iowa for the total purchase price of $31,000 for the engineering division. Item 2 is the purchase of a SmithCo Sandstar groomer from Turf Works of Johnson, Iowa for the purchase price of $27,616 for the Parks Division Athletics Fields Maintenance of Leisure Services. Item 3 is the purchase of a 2022 gravely pro-turn 672 EFI zero-turn mower from Miller True Value of Waverly, Iowa for the purchase price of $14,500 for the Parks Division Athletic Fields Maintenance of Leisure Services. Item 4 is purchase of a Trax Flex 2 no-till drill cedar from P&amp;K Midwest of Waverly, Iowa for the purchase price of $19,935 for the Vegetation Management Division of Leisure Services. Item 5 is a payer request from Cresco Building Service Incorporated for the Public Services Center North Edition 2021 for the amount of $44,859. Item 6 is a payer request from Farnsworth Group for the Public Services Center North Edition 2021 for the amount of $4,573.28. Item 7 is a payer request from Farnsworth Group for the First Street Northeast Building Renovations for the amount of $2,916. Item 8 is a payer request from Manawa Construction Incorporated for the Third Street Southeast Bridge Removal for the amount of $96,624.69. Item 9 is a payer request from Snyder and Associates for the Cedar Lane Reconstruction Culvert Replacement for the amount of $5,716.63. Item 10 is a payer request from Snyder and Associates for the Traffic Study 2020 for the amount of $4,100. Item 11 is a payer request from Terricon for the First Street Northeast Building Renovations for the amount of $4,478.93. Item 12 is a payer request from WHKS and Company for the Third Street Southeast Bridge Removal for the amount of $7,859.64. Item 13 is a payer request from WHKS and Company for the Third Street Southeast Bridge Removal for the amount of $2,338.41. Item 14 is a payer request from WHKS and Company for the Cedar River Trail Bridge for the amount of $963.20. Item 15 is a payer request from MSA Professional Services Incorporated for the Waverly Comprehensive Plan Bike and Pedestrian Trail Plan and Park and Open Space Plan Project for the amount of $16,000. Item 16 is a payer request from Cardinal Construction Incorporated for the South Riverside Park and Shelter 2020 for the amount of $11,301.25. And item 17 is a payer request from Grider Construction Incorporated for the WPC Facility Improvements 2020 for the amount of $482,147.80. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll entertain a motion. Just a correction, I think you had said 962.30.
On which one?
Oppose that on item 13, and it is 963.20.
Okay, on 14, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay. 963.20.
And Mr. Mayor, I think you had one more item than what we had.
I believe the...
You had a number...
The cedar, the no-till cedar that was $19,935 has been moved to an action item because...
Okay, we'll formally make that into its own. Just a printing error, it's okay.
Yeah, so that should be...
So we might be a number off, that's why Mr. Snyder's numbering was off, so...
Exactly.
That's fine. So, obviously, number four has been pulled over to a resolution item. Everything gets shifted up a number there. The correction on number, your number...
It's 13.
13. Number 13.
Is noted as such. So we'll entertain a motion with those corrections.
I move approval of the consent calendar as read and corrected. Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Roffey. Any council discussion? The only thing that I wanted to note, well, that'll come up on the cedar, I'm sorry, the grant stuff on the cedar.
I mean, I will acknowledge that two of these, we put out bids, we only had one, like, bid, so it's always better if we have multiple bids. On the other hand, it looks like for both of those bids, we're still not getting it for another six months just because of the supply chain, so rather than put that off anymore, I think we're probably better off taking the bid we've got.
Yep. All right. Hearing no further. All in favor of the consent calendar with the corrections, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries. Item H under regular business, item number one, presentation of the traffic study 2020 report.
Turn it over to Tony Bayes from Snyder and Associates here. I will run the projector, he can tell me where the mic is.
Perfect.
Yeah, sure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Mike mentioned, I'm Tony Bayes, traffic engineer with Snyder and Associates. I'm going to give you kind of a brief overview of the Waverly traffic study we've been working on, as well as kind of hit some key points that we feel you might be interested in. So basically, this was a citywide study, involved 33 intersections, 18 unsignalized and 15 signalized. Primary task for the study included data collection, which was, a lot of that was attorney movement traffic count data, 48-hour traffic count data at each intersection except for eight intersections where that data was supplied by the city from their traffic cameras, their traffic signal cameras. Also, data collection included quite a bit of intersection traffic signal equipment, inventories at each signalized intersection. Safety analysis included a review of the five-year crash history for each intersection, as well as the major corridors included in the study area. We also did traffic signal warrant analysis of four signalized, currently signalized, and four unsignalized intersections to determine if, you know, current traffic count data meets the traffic signal warrant criteria at those intersections. We also developed a traffic signal maintenance plan which identified routine maintenance needs as well as future signal upgrade needs, and provided all that information in a separate memorandum that we supplied back in 2020. A lot of the work focused on analysis of traffic operations at the study intersections, so that was a big part of the study. We did detailed analysis of the peak hour traffic data that was counted to determine average delays and levels of service for those intersections. Based on the analysis that was performed, we looked at improvement needs and evaluation of those improvements, and provided recommendations for improvements to the transportation system here. For recommended improvements, we did some concept design work for the geometric improvements that were recommended, as well as some concept cost estimating for those improvements. And then also, as part of the modeling and analysis, we developed traffic signal timing plans to update existing timing plans at the 15 signalized intersections in Waverly. So the next slide is really just a map showing the study area, whether it's a signalized or unsignalized intersection. You can see that, you know, majority of the study intersections were along the Bremer Avenue corridor, or the Fourth Street Southwest corridor. Although, we did have, you know, several intersections along the Fifth Avenue West corridor, Northwest corridor, and a few other kind of miscellaneous locations that we're working with the city, we felt kind of were in need of taking a look at. So looking at the traffic count data, this is kind of an example of kind of the two major corridors in Waverly, the Bremer Avenue and Fourth Street Southwest corridor. We took our 48-hour count data and applied some modification factors to get that to an average annual daily traffic, which is what DOT reports when they do their traffic counts for comparison purposes. So basically, what we're seeing from that count data is, basically, on Bremer Avenue east of Fourth Street and Fourth Street Southwest, kind of between Cedar River Parkway and Bremer Avenue, volumes are down a bit, which is not surprising because the previous 2017 counts were done before the Cedar River Parkway was opened, all the way from Fourth Street to Bremer Avenue. Looking on Bremer Avenue west of Fourth Street and Fourth Street south of Cedar River Parkway, those volumes are pretty much the same as the 2017 counts for those sections. So we also would like, as mentioned, looked at traffic signal warrants. The MUTCD, or the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices, has nine signal warrants. For most cases, usually, they're one of the first three warrants, are the warrants that are used to justify signals. Those are the traffic volume warrants, warrant one being eight-hour volume, warrant two, four-hour volume, and warrant three, peak hour. From our analysis, we found that those four intersection, or so, the eight intersections, four signalized, four unsignalized, only one of the intersections, the Heritage Way and 10th Avenue Southwest intersection, meets any of those three warrant criteria. And that, probably the primary reason that that intersection met the criteria is because it is a high-speed corridor along Heritage Way there, and anything above 45 miles per hour, you would use that criteria for the signal warrant.
Did you test the warrant criteria at Cedar Parkway and East Bremer Avenue, where the new bridge comes in?
Cedar River Parkway and East Bremer, no, I don't, we did not look at that one.
Okay, so that stop sign all the way there at the east end of town?
Right side of the picture.
Yeah.
What's it?
Way on the right side of the picture.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know these times. Yeah, no, we did not look at that one. I mean, certainly could, if you'd like. A T-intersection, I'd say it's probably pretty effy that it wouldn't meet warrant criteria, but we could certainly take a look at it. So we also did an analysis of crash and operations for Bremer Avenue corridor with the current three-lane configuration comparing to the previous four-lane configuration along that corridor. For the crash analysis, we had three years of before data and two years of after data for the crash history, and from that analysis, we found, you know, an average of about, well, a 47% overall, actually, reduction in crashes per year before, I mean, after compared to before with the four-lane configuration. We also looked at travel time along that, along Bremer Avenue, and this would be from 16th Street Southwest to Third Street East, the, basically, the limits of the signalized intersections along the corridor, and found that eastbound, and this is, this is analysis assuming optimized signal timings for both scenarios, analysis found eastbound travel time increase of about 23 seconds with the three-lane versus four-lane, and westbound, only about four-second increase with the three-lane versus the four-lane. And really, the eastbound increase was really mostly due to additional delay at the Bremer Avenue and Fourth Street Southwest intersection. It's a more major intersection, obviously, you've got left turn phases, which kind of eat up some of that cycle time at that intersection.
How does this determine, is it down by the Central Avenue stoplight?
No, this is, this was a, an analysis done from modeling. It's a, it's a highway-capacity manual procedure called arterial analysis, which looks at the average delays at each signalized intersection along the corridor that are in the model.
And this is assuming a change to the current timing as well?
All right, so after looking at all of that, and kind of, you know, reviewing existing conditions and, and, you know, all the issues related to traffic volumes, operations, and crash history, we came up with two probably fairly major recommended improvements for geometric improvements. First one being a potential roundabout at the Heritage Way and 10th Avenue intersection. We know that Iowa DOT has been considering this for quite some time, and we agree that it would make sense due to concerns with signalizing this intersection and due to substantial safety benefits that we would expect with a roundabout versus a signal installation. The other geometric improvement would be the recommended eastbound right turn lane at Fourth Street Southwest and Bremer Avenue. Our analysis, and as I kind of mentioned in the travel time analysis, that was one that was really causing the highest eastbound delay along that corridor. By building that right turn lane, our modeling shows that that would reduce that PM peak eastbound delay by about 12 seconds. And the other side of that is, we were seeing the model showing some fairly long queues, eastbound vehicle queues waiting to go when the light turns green, you know, in the range of 500 feet, and adding that turn lane would be projected to bring that queue length down to about 300 feet.
So that was the PM?
PMP.
Peak.
Right.
So those delays or those benefits may only be, you know, realized in the late afternoon, like when school lets out and we have shift changes. The rest of the time, it would probably have no benefit or no impact.
Not, not a lot of, not a significant benefit, but yeah, there's, there'd probably be some benefit all times a day, but certainly, PMP could be where you'd see the most benefit.
Now, the, sounds like the roundabout on the west edge of town, that sounds like something that Iowa DOT is also interested. Is it possible that they might be the ones instigating that or paying for it? I'm pretty sure that the one at downtown is, if we want to change that, that's all on us. So adding the right turn lane?
Oh, oh, yes.
Would, that would be us fitting the bill, the roundabout.
Well, let's talk about the roundabout.
Sure.
Start there. I would certainly hope they would finance this, because this would be a very substantial cost to make this type of an improvement. So regarding the one downtown, there may be some TSEP, Traffic Safety Improvement Funds, or if this is a timing, if it's not a safety issue, what are the options?
There's, you know, obviously, USEP. TSEP would be, you know, more dependent upon if you had a lot of crash history there, and I, you know, I don't think there, there's a lot, and you probably, they probably, probably use some TSEP money as part of the three-lane.
And the source of that is through the district, or is that?
It's a state program, so yeah, it would be, you'd apply through, they have an annual application through the Traffic and Safety Bureau at the DOT, or TSEP. TSEP is the Traffic Safety Improvement Program. Yeah, I think, I mean, there's a possibility. Certainly worth talking to the DOT about it. TSEP might be a possibility, USEP might be a possibility, STBG, I don't know if it's big enough to consider something for that, but, you know...
We're throwing out lots of acronyms here, but the bottom line is they're...
There's grand men pay for it, but don't get our hopes up?
Right.
Okay.
When it comes to the one Heritage Way, I think that needs to be a DOT-initiated and funded project.
Anything else on those? Okay. So, some other miscellaneous improvements, we recommend considering removal of unwarranted signals. As I mentioned, those are the four unsignalized intersections that don't meet warrant criteria. In our draft report, we actually recommended just two of those initially, is the 20th Street Northwest, Third Avenue Northwest, and the Bremer Avenue and Third Street East intersections. Those two intersections were furthest away from meeting the signal warrant criteria in terms of traffic volume, and we felt that it might be a good idea to do a couple first, see how things go. Traffic could redistribute, particularly at the Third Street East intersection, if you take that signal out, some of that traffic may go over to Second Street, and so that might change your mind on whether you want to, maybe remove the Second Street one or not. So anyway, we also, you know, recommend considering rectangular rapid flashing beacons at those two intersections that we recommended for removals, just because of, there's a fair, fairly significant amount of pedestrian crossing activity at both of those intersections. The 20th Street Northwest and Third Avenue might depend more on school traffic, the future school location to the west, what kind of sidewalk system, students walking to and from school might occur there, some things to consider. As I mentioned, we did provide updated traffic signal timing plans as part of the study, so recommend that those be implemented. And then, kind of a variety of traffic signal upgrades that we recommended. The first two are specific intersection and signing, intersection signing and signal pull items at Bremer Avenue and First Street West and First Street East, and then the remaining items are from our traffic signal maintenance memo that we put together a while back, which are more generic and apply to kind of multiple intersections, and, you know, they would include things like replacing older traffic signals. There's a few of those in town that are probably getting close to reaching their, end of their useful life. Adding or replacing video detection, which I know the city has been doing on a fairly regular basis, upgrading new detection at signals. Signal cabinet controller upgrades, implementing flashing yellow arrow operation, which is kind of the new standard in the MUTCD for left turn lanes. Installing battery backup systems which can help if, you know, lose power or you have issues with quality of power that might send the signal into flash on a regular basis. Installing a, an overall traffic signal management system that would allow, you know, city staff to more easily monitor how signals are operating and change timings and so forth. Upgrading to fiber optic or wireless communications in areas where you've got kind of an older twisted pair of copper communication system, and then upgrading pedestrian signals and push buttons to kind of the latest ADA compliant accessible pedestrian signals. With that, be happy to try to respond to any questions you might have.
You know, there's two intersections in particular that I want to highlight that I hope that you will have addressed in your study, and that is the West Bremer and Fourth Street intersection, which is kind of the main busy intersection in town.
Yeah, that was the one where we had the right turn lane.
Yeah, and the problem that I want to address, and has been brought up to me by a lot of people, is the traffic coming from the north heading south on Fourth Street. There is one lane coming from, I mean, a southbound lane on the street, and the issue is, is that the traffic coming north on Fourth Street that has a turning lane in the middle, and then a combined right turn and straight lane on the right, and the problem is, is that people that are turning will pull halfway into the intersection, people coming from the north can't see if there are cars that are coming that are heading straight across the intersection. And I myself have had a number of incidents where I came within a hair's breadth of hitting somebody because they were being masked by the cars that are in the left turning lane. Is there any... Is there any recommendation to make that middle lane a left turn straight lane and the lane on the right being a right turn lane only?
We could certainly take a look at that, if even from an operational standpoint, um, you know, we weren't seeing any operational problems with that, but I get, I understand what you're saying from a safety perspective. The thing is, the three lanes kind of need to align north and south, so you can't, um, you know, we could take, maybe there's a possibility of you got enough width to paint out a separate southbound left turn lane.
But it, it has, it, it, it's, it's the wide commercial area streets, so it does have enough width, but, um, uh, I, I think the same thing is true on 1st Street, uh, 1st Street West, because you have the cars coming from the north there, and there is an actual turning lane there. There's a right-hand turning lane, and then the center lane is, uh, for straight-through traffic and left-turning traffic, um, which, which makes a little bit more sense, and I'm not sure why we couldn't have that same configuration on 1st, 4th Street, because it, the people that have to go on that street, uh, I mean, you're, you're basically playing Russian roulette trying to, to make a left-hand turn on that, that street. So, I would, I would appreciate ta, uh, you taking a closer look at that. And then also, a number of people have discussed issues on 16th Street West and Bremer Avenue, which is the turn to the high school. That, that is a, particularly in the morning when students are going to high school, that is a particularly problematic corner, uh, especially with the two stoplights within about, was about a block of each other. People tend to try to take alternative routes, cutting across traffic, and apparently that's a, a real problem area. I'm not personally, um, have any experience with that, but a number of people have talked to me about issues that they've had with that. And I know that, uh, that's one of the reasons why that's a four-lane configuration in that area rather than a three-lane is to hopefully handle some of that turning traffic, but I, I, I think that I would like to hear, um, from an expert such as your firm, if there was some other configuration that we might be able to do there that would assist in, in, in that left-hand turning traffic in the, in the morning for school hours.
Is the concern that the, the left turn lane traffic westbound at 16th backs up to 15th?
You're probably more familiar with that than I am. Like I said, I'm not there in the morning when school starts, so.
So my experience with it is that because that kind of area both leads into the high school and the middle school, that we have both of the schools worth of traffic trying to go, so then you have the kids that are also walking because a lot of kids walk along that street. So there's just a lot of cars there, and since a lot of them are the new drivers, they don't have as much, like, experience, so I think that they're kind of a lot, do a lot more, like, risky moves. So I know that personally, I take a turn by Casey's to get there in the morning, and that's what my family does, just so that we can avoid that, and I think that it's a little bit slower overall, but it's safer, and I think that, uh, that's not something that we should necessarily think is something we have to worry about, uh, when we, there is that other better option of just turning further on.
Well, and you're also putting more traffic through a residential neighborhood rather than a collector's street, and the collector's street is more designed for more traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd have to agree with what, you know, Gretchen had mentioned. You've got the daycare, you've got West Cedar, you've got the library, which isn't, you know, 8 o'clock in the morning, but if you take a Wednesday afternoon, you got West Cedar, the library, Trinity's after-school program, you got the daycare, high school, middle school, you got a conglomeration of that, of, uh, potentials for conflict.
I, I think it's more of an issue when school gets out rather than when school gets in, because people are kind of arriving at different times.
Right.
But everyone gets out at the same time, and as Gretchen pointed out, there's a lot of pedestrians.
Yep.
You know, all the kids who are walking from the middle school to the library at that intersection, so.
Yeah, Wednesday afternoons are probably the worst.
So, so when we start talking about considering the removal of, of traffic signals, one of the things that we want you to be thinking about too is, how is the, the, uh, traffic pattern's going to change with two new elementary schools opening up and three elementary schools closing? So if West Cedar's no longer in play, how's that going to change the traffic flow patterns?
Absolutely.
And that's also a consideration that, that Tony brought up regarding the one at 20th Street and 3rd Avenue Northwest. So, our recommendation on, on some of this stuff is, is always to proceed kind of cautiously that everything that we've done is kind of a snapshot in time. Uh, was based on two days. We, early April, so school was in session, college was in session, so we think that is a good representation. The DOT counts during the summertime. 2017 counts, we're going, we're definitely impacted by the work on Bremer Avenue, so, so again, everything, we want you just to be careful in, in not reading too much into it, but I think what we have is three data points. The DOT did, counts again this summer, those will be released in the, I think, spring of '22.
Yeah, at least by June.
Yeah. So we'll have another set of data points. We now have a baseline, so that, um, if we want to go back and revisit, you know, just say, wait, let's, let's wait until the new schools are done, they're open, the other ones are, are kind of shut down, things are kind of normalizing, maybe we want to go back and revisit some areas sections and see how things have, have changed. Maybe for the better, uh, maybe for the worse, and that might give us, um, better direction at that time.
So this traffic study, was it simply automobile traffic, or did it also include pedestrian traffic?
The counts that we did included pedestrian traffic, the, the counts from the city's grid smart system did not include pedestrians, but we did consider that into kind of our analysis and recommendations. For example, um, you know, when we're developing the signal timing plans, we looked at the frequency and number of pedestrians at an intersection, and how, how critical it would be to make those timing plans fit with the needed pedestrian crossing time versus that pedestrian crossing time kicking the signal out of coordination when a pedestrian, maybe a rare pedestrian at some faraway intersection, um, you know, pushes the button to keep the walk signal.
What are your thoughts about pedestrian traffic at that corner of Bremer Avenue and 4th Street Southwest? That's the most common place I see walkers stranded. They've pushed the button, they're waiting, 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 um, and, you know, it seems like a really inefficient.
Unfortunately, when you've got, uh, an intersection with a lot of movements, um, it takes a fair amount of cycle time to, to get all the way around, uh, and serve every movement. We actually, I think we, we were probably looking at, um, increasing some of those walk and pedestrian times to get them kind of, uh, you know, current, with kind of current recommendations on that, uh, but it still might take a little, you know, a bit more time for that walk signal to come up, just because it has to cycle through, uh, to that pedestrian phase each time.
So someone pushing the button doesn't interrupt the cycle, it's going to go through the whole cycle?
Well, it depends where, at what point in the cycle they push the button, but yeah, worst cases, they'd have to sit through almost an entire cycle before, yeah.
And, and, and getting a walk signal just really doesn't do anything other than giving them the recommended time to cross the street that is, is less dangerous than other times, because it doesn't actually stop the traffic. It's just indicating that the traffic has stopped because the traffic has a red light. This would be a good time to try to get across the street. Am I, am I saying that?
It doesn't protect you from turning vehicles.
Correct. And especially if we put a left-right turn lane, uh, onto 4th Street, that, that will make the problem even, even larger.
It does extend the amount of time for the signal to cycle through. I mean, so I know that there are times if you're crossing, at least on Bremer Avenue, if there's not a walk symbol, the signal probably switches in, I don't know, 15, 20 seconds, but if there is a walk signal, you have a longer, it basically runs the walk symbol and then the countdown before it switches.
So, how are those?
I think it, it depends on which intersection. I mean, you've, you've got several that don't have, um, push buttons for crossing the, the minor roadway, I guess the minor street, and those, those walks just recycle each, each, each cycle, basically. But i- if, if we're running coordination, we've got to be running a si, a fixed cycle length, so we either have to take in the, take into account the time needed to accommodate all those pedestrian movements, or if we think it's a, an intersection that's going to have very low pedestrian movements, we'll, you know, allow the pedestrians to kick that signal out of coordination for a short time, and then it has to go back into coordination after they, they complete their crossing.
So some of those, it does add time?
Yeah. I think that's what it does, like in the, the East Bremer Avenue. I think you're right that at 4th and West Bremer, it's a fixed amount of time, and you don't get extra time just because you push the button.
And that's what, you know, as you started this slide and going through the recommended, uh, removals, I saw a few people with puzzled looks when those, uh, 2nd Street East and 3rd Street East recommendations came up, as far as in regards to pedestrian crossing and my, from my point of view, also with driving up to the intersection, you got parked cars, you have additional, you know, blind spot to try to make a left-hand turn onto Bremer from either of those, or a right-hand turn, or, or crossing, you know, straight through, so I'd like to know the reasoning, eventually, not tonight, but later, as far as those two in particular, those recommendations for removal.
Well.
For 2nd and 3rd?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think you said it was based on traffic counts.
Right.
But I mean, as, as someone who uses those, specifically the 3rd Street intersection a lot, there are times where I feel like it would be faster to turn left if it was a stop sign instead of a signal. There are many times where I pull up and there's no traffic coming, you know, I'm a good law-abiding citizen, I wait for my green light, um, and I feel like if it was a stop sign, I could get through there faster.
We actually found that out from the analysis that, you know, where traffic delays would be lower on the side street with stop control than a signal.
I just think about 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock in the morning on a, on a Friday when there's shoppers and lots of cars downtown, even trying to make a right-hand turn, you know, you can't see confidently that there's cars coming to make a right on red, so, but anyway, we'll get to that eventually, so.
Well, I, I do like the idea of not pulling them all out at once. I mean, I was promoting the idea of removing the 2nd Street in the middle so you'd have the signal, but it seems like the 3rd Street has even lower traffic counts, and that might be a better first choice.
Well, those two intersections, for instance, turn them off, put some stop signs up for a couple weeks and see what happens.
Well. Yeah, there's a kind of a standard test period that you should go through for.
Right, and if it doesn't work out, you turn them back on.
I mean, I, I think about every time that we have a event on Main Street, it seems like they shut down the 2nd Street.
Yeah.
And, you know, leave 1st and 3rd going, so.
Which brings up my next question is, where are we in this process? This is, this one slide is clearly not your entire report, I would assume.
Oh, no.
This is maybe just the preliminary.
Well, we, I think we're close to done. We have submitted the draft report, um, we're waiting for any comments that Iowa DOT might have still, but I think other than that, any, any comments that we have to address?
So what, what, what do we do going forward then here as a council with these recommendations? Are these recommendations then in the hands of, of city staff to bring to the council if they want to have some of this done? For example, I'm, I'm going to keep hammering on this 4th Street, uh, turn signal issue because that is an extremely important issue to me, and I don't want it to be overlooked. So how do we get that into the study, and then how do we as a council address those kinds of issues, um, rather than have them just simply be put in a study and put on somebody's shelf?
Rod, I, I know what you're talking about. I can work with Tony on, on both the 4th and 1st Street intersection, looking, looking at the, the pavement geometry as far as the turn lanes. Regarding this, this slide that's up, uh, as far as removing unwarranted traffic signals, I, I think we're going to look towards the council, decide if that's something they want to pursue, is, is, you know, all of them, one of them? You know, we, we can help guide you through, through that process and, and coordinate with the DOT on, on what, what that would look like, but I think we want, want to give feedback from the council and, and feedback from the pu, public if there's one or two or more that you want to take a look at, or whether you just won't wait until the schools are open. Now, East Bremer, schools may not affect that, uh, but some of the other ones, they may. As far as implementing and updating the traffic signal timing, I, I think that's a given that we're going to take a look at, at, at doing that, and we will come back to you with a side-by-side comparison of, of each location and, and show you how they're being changed. I don't think it's going to be dramatic, I think it's probably going to be more subtle, a few seconds here, a few seconds there, um, on, on each approach, so. And then as far as, um, upgrading the traffic signal equipment, uh, I would say that's on staff, that we're going to, our focus has, has been over the last four years to do three cameras a year. That may now switch to, uh, upgrading the controllers and taking a look at, at each one of those, uh, to see, um, if we're, if we're deficient in our equipment or, or could benefit from, from, um, upgrading, uh, the controllers at each intersection.
Well, I would specifically like to see some kind of a written recommendation on 4th Street West and 16th Street West, even if the recommendation is not to make any changes. And then also, were there any other places with any of the non-signalized intersections, the ones that simply had stop signs, that you identified as being a particular issue?
I don't believe so.
Well, as I recall from the report, the intersection at 10th and Heritage over by CUNA, where they put in the traffic signal, had two of the warrants, warrants.
Warrant number two.
Warrant number two, well, thank you.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, that, that was the big one where we recommended roundabout.
But the other, the other ones, because there are a lot of non-signalized intersections that were flagged as, uh, for, you know, specifically to take a look at. The one that particularly sticks in my mind is the one at 1st Street, uh, 1st Street West and, and 5th Avenue, um, over by the end of Coleman Park, and there were some concerns about traffic volume at that stop sign.
I don't know that we're looking at making those signalized as much as trying to get some understanding of how much traffic is going through those intersections.
Right, yeah.
Because I don't think those have been included.
No, I don't think there's any question, I don't think that, that needs to be signalized, but were, there are some issues, some questions that that was a, an intersection of specific concern because of the amount of traffic that was on that corner.
You, you said 5th Avenue and 4th Street, or 5th Avenue and 1st?
1st Street.
Yes, northwest.
1st Street.
By Coleman, north of Coleman.
That was the intersection E on your?
Oh, northwest.
Northwest, yeah.
Northwest, okay, northwest.
Yeah, I mean, we, we analyzed that intersection and really, operations looked good, we were level of service B, you know, 11 to 14 second average delays for the, you know, the critical eastbound approach was the highest delay approach.
I assume this is all going to be covered in your report when we, when we get it, so. I don't, I don't want to belabor the, the, belabor it tonight, we've got a lot of other things to cover, so.
On those potentially unwarranted traffic signals on Bremer, is it an option at all to flash those red based on peak hour, or better yet, by camera? Rather than dump them, because there really is a need for both?
Yeah, you, uh, yellow-red flash has really not looked on as favorable and, as a good idea, um, to the point being, um, the people that have the red flash on the side street don't know that the people on the, the main line don't also have a red flash. In fact, I think DOT a few years back went through, did a lot of projects statewide to get rid of intersection that, that had yellow-red flash, and, uh, I think they converted a lot of those intersections with just side street flashing red, uh, beacons on the stop signs. So it, it's not a recommended, and I, I'd have to look, I don't even know if it's allowed as a type of operation for a signal.
I know, I see it on a places.
Yeah, I know, there's still some cities that do nighttime yellow-red flash, yeah.
I have a question. So when I'm in the high school parking lot, there's an exit leading west, I think, uh, it doesn't have a stop sign, and I know that that's kind of a really confusing area, so I'm just wondering, like, what would be the best situation for handling that, do you think?
Which intersection?
So is this the intersection, or is this going on to 16th Street? You're talking about leaving the parking lot?
Yeah, it's leaving the high school parking lot when you're heading, um, west, I think, um, because all the other exits have stop signs, and so oftentimes, too, when the cars are parked there, it's kind of hard to see who's coming, and I, like, even today, me and my sister had to slam on the brakes because someone just kind of shot right out and didn't wait.
Is that the exit closest to the high school entrance, to the east entrance of the high school, or west?
Hospital.
Yeah, it would be.
Oh, that one?
Right, here. So it's actually just leaving the parking lot, so it's not actually a street?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if it's widely known, but if you're, if you're on a private driveway and entering a public street, you're required by Iowa Code to stop, even if there's not a stop sign there.
Yeah, people don't stop.
That'd be a good one for the school district, honestly?
Yeah, that might be the, the school board would be more.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, a school parking lot.
If some of them do have stop signs and some don't, I would agree, some uniformity would probably make sense.
Yeah.
And a stop sign to remind high school students that, you're supposed to stop.
Or squeal tires on pavement.
I'd like to comment on, uh,
I'd like to comment on Cedar River Parkway and East Bremmer Avenue, whether this is something that happens imminently or that we just keep on our radar and watch, but that's an intersection that I happen to take every day and there's a lot of truck and agricultural traffic that either crosses that intersection or comes to that, turns at the T. And I think there's a lot of potential for danger there. A lot of times it's really hard. If I'm in the left-hand turn lane trying to turn back west towards Waverly, I can't see eastbound or westbound traffic because I've got somebody to the side of me that's waiting to turn east. And, and I think that, I think traffic there is only going to increase if anything. And the other comment I wanted to make is with regard to evaluating those downtown stop lights, well, any of these, I guess, at some point I'd like to hear law enforcement input and just see what their sense is of how these intersections are working and the level of danger that they might see.
Yeah, the other issue at the intersection you're talking about with Cedar River Parkway and Highway 3 East is pedestrians. I have had constituents contact me, I believe there are daycares out on that side of town, you know, with groups trying to cross that street. And the visibility, I think, at that intersection is tough even when you don't have a car next to you turning east because it's, there's a bit of a hill there and a curve and, and it, it can get tricky. And some people are coming in there at 60 miles an hour and so you think you have time to pull out, but depending on how fast they're going, you don't. So I agree with Julie, I think it'd be interesting to see a little more data from that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pile on there and say that's an intersection that concerns me. I would hate for us to need to wait until we have enough accidents there before we do something about it. And that's kind of my concern with Iowa DOT, they're going to wait until the accident counts pile up there before they agree to put something in there, but that's an intersection that, that very much concerns me. I also want to, to mention again, I've, I've said this before, the intersections at West Bremmer and 10th and the intersections at West Bremmer and 15th, we don't have walk symbols against the side streets. So it means if you're walking east-west along Bremmer Avenue, there aren't walk symbols. So if you're walking across the street and suddenly you may find the light turning yellow on you with no warning. And I, I, I know that we have upgrades scheduled, but I don't know if that's included in our, our type of upgrades.
So you said on West Bremmer at 10th Street?
10th Street and 15th.
By the, by the library.
So by the library and by the hospital. So if you're crossing Bremmer Avenue, there's walk symbols.
But not going.
But if you're walking east-west, if you're crossing the side streets.
Side street.
Then there is, there is no walk symbol at all. So as I say, you can be halfway across the street and suddenly the light will turn yellow on you, so. And, and I've mentioned before, I know that with the Larrabee Center and trinkets and togs, I think there's lots of people who may be mentally disabled using those signals and I really don't think they need added confusion to their lives.
Well, I also, there's a lot of people who live at Waverly Homes who walk over to Meyer Pharmacy, walk to the hospital.
Sure.
Or the bank, you know, who might need to have a signal to get across. One comment I'll make about the light out by Mercy One Clinic, which is off.
Third Avenue.
Yeah, is that Third Avenue?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On Third, yeah.
So I, I would, I would like to see what happens once there's a school there.
Yeah.
I had a classmate who was struck by a semi and killed at that intersection before there was a light there and I, you know, who was trying to dart across the road. And so I think that's part of why there ended up a signal there, but I think especially with the new elementary school, we might see more foot traffic going across there.
Or bicycle traffic.
Yeah.
That was the third and 20th signal?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, I'm sure we'll bring the horse back into the council chambers in the future. Thank you, Tony, for your help.
Can we get a copy of these slides?
I'm sure we can get them from Mike, if you want copies of the slides.
If we could get a copy of the slides, or if they're going to be in the final report, that would be great.
I've got 10 copies.
Or even an electronic copy is fine.
Well, we got 10 copies here. We'll make sure Carla gets to eat the, the electronic version so that she can send it out.
Perfect.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving forward with item number two, Resolution 21-184, Resolution approving a possible extension to the Bremmer County Fair Lease. Entertain a motion. Thank you, ma'am.
I will move approval of Resolution 21-184 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Schneider. Council discussion. Now we have some representatives from the fair board here, James, Bill, whoever.
I'm not sure what to say, they're wanting a three-year extension.
Tip?
We've been through this before and the last time it was a three-year request that council, I want to say granted too.
Okay.
You just have to decide if that's something you want to do to tie that ground up for another two years.
I'll leave it at the volition of the council. If they want to hear from the, the fair board or have any questions for them, we'll entertain a dialogue. Normally we don't.
Well, I, I think it would be helpful to hear from them.
Okay.
I've certainly heard from constituents who have questions about the details, the timeline, what to expect, and most of the constituents I've heard from have been concerned about a lengthy extension since we are trying to plan renovations for Memorial Park. So I think it would be good to hear from them.
Perfect. Gentlemen? Most everybody knows who you are, but if you would introduce yourself for the record as well, that'd be great.
Good evening. Roy Peterson with Bremmer County Fair and actually Josh Peterson, President of Bremmer County Fair. Not that we're related, but we are. So, but I appreciate having the opportunity to visit with you. You know, well, let me add one more thing about, I, I just got to thinking about the Highway 3 and Cedar River Parkway intersection and also the highway, keep in mind that once that fair gets to that east side, that could bring three to 5,000 more useful, that highway being used more and more, because once we get over there, that's the, the quick way to get across town from, from the west, so keep that in mind. So it might, it might be definitely something you want to look at, so. I'm just going to give you just a quick run-through what, what's going on here, just so that it gives you some confidence that things are moving very, actually fairly quickly. I know some time's gone by. In 2020, February, we purchased that ground and from that point on, we had a tough year. We all know why. We did get the conceptual design completed through Modern Design through that year. It would, it just took, it was a lengthy process last, last year, but I, I will say we, we got that conceptual done. Meantime, we started gearing up for our fundraising. Fundraising is being done internally this, this round. We have a, a group of about six of us that are going face-to-face and that is actually working well. Just on my way over here, I got another call for 100,000. So we've been averaging about 100, or let's go 50 to 100,000 every so many weeks. Phone calls have been being made, checks have been coming in, so. The P.O. box is always there for checks to be coming in, so. I gave you a staff summary of a little bit of the outline of what's already in cash already for us to use, so that is only an effort that is only about six months old. So I see, and actually there's three more families that were just connected, we connected with just in the last week, so we expect that to possibly pull in a quarter of a million. So what we're doing is we're working with family, farm families and businesses in Bremmer County, not in Waverly. To be honest with you, I haven't even gone face-to-face with anybody in town. It's outside of our, outside, where the, you know, Bremmer County is a fair that services the whole Bremmer County. We're, so we're out there looking where we didn't go looking before, we'll put it that way. So that's actually working out really well. There's been a lot of activity out there already, you just don't see it. It's a unique activity. We have about 276,000 cubic yards to cut of material and then we have to fill about 323,000 cubic yards. We're moving material around in three, in a tier, so if we're not leveling it out, we're just going to keep it like a step, okay? With that said though, we had about 46,000 cubic yards that I decided to go after and see if I could get that material brought in for free. So we've, I've matched almost that 46,000 now, so we actually have a, a cut and fill that match, so we won't hardly be bringing any material in on that project. Saves us a lot of time and money. Also, you'll see that there is a staging area going on there. One might wonder how that ever happened. I, I got a call from our waste water treatment plant through the city, actually, had an idea and we gave that some thought and we decided that we needed to partner with the city on that project. They didn't have quite the area to stage all that limestone that they're pulling out of there and, and crush it, okay? So they pulled that all out to our location and they're crushing, currently they're crushing right now. So where do, what do we get out of this? It's a two-way street, it's a partnership like you won't believe. We might save ourselves 150,000 in three-inch material for like road base. They're, they're struggling making that number one rock that they want to get, that's one-inch rock and, and we are going to get all what they call the reject material, which is three inches or less. So we're going to end up with quite a pile there left over that we can use for our project, for roads and under buildings, okay? With that said, if you, you noticed this, so that kind of takes you up to a little bit, just briefly, we went through the conceptual, we got that done. We're hand-in-hand with our, with Terry, with PLS on the surveying side of things. We know what we got for material out there, so in 2022, we are finally going to move dirt out there, so next year. So if you looked at your staff, that staff summary, it's outlined a preliminary schedule of what's going to happen in the next week, weeks and months ahead of us. And that's a wonderful target. We believe it's, it's workable to get there. But we toyed with the idea that maybe we couldn't do this whole project. It was just too big all at one time. With the help of the Bremmer County Banking Association, we are now able to, to knock this part of the Phase 1 out and that is moving all the dirt next year. So that's a good, that's a good thing. And people are actually, are waiting for us to get the dirt moved. There are, there's, there's more checks to be written, we already know this, they're just sitting there waiting for that dirt to get moved. So the fair board shows that we needed to move that dirt without the, without the help of the supervisors, so we're, we're going to move it ourselves. So I just wanted to give you that comfort that that, that's what's going to happen next year, all the dirt's going to get moved, some infrastructure that's needed, only in, in, in the primary infrastructure be put in. We've had a preliminary discussion with the, with Waverly Utilities about the power side of things and now we need to get in front of the city and the county yet, in, your departments that, to help us through some of that, that, what we need to do when we get into the infrastructure for next year. With that said, is there any questions for us about an extension? We obviously need two more years for an extension. Next year's dirt moving, the fair boards fully understand that we need to, you know, get out of our current location, but we also need your help and stay behind us that we're doing all we can to move forward, so.
There's just no way we know that we can have a fair there by 20, if we were, 2022 we moved dirt, 2023 is about the furthest we truly start building most likely, so that would still give us about a year, a year and a half if we had a two-year extension to, you know, actually have a fair out there after 2022. So 2024 would be a goal at this moment to have a fair out there.
So this lease extension would be March 1st, 2022 to February 28th, 2024 that you're proposing, correct?
Yeah.
And I guess how does that line up with what we think we could possibly do at Memorial Park? Because, you know, we've got pool, golf course, if that's out of the way, what are the challenges maybe the staff sees, if any, there?
Well, we will have our plan in place next fall. We'll know exactly what we're going to do and we'll be budgeting for that spring start, moving our own dirt, taking out buildings, possibly starting to flatten out our own area. So it's a year overlap that we're going to be in conflict. So if you want to progress with Memorial Park, then you can give it to your extension. If you want to hold that off, then you can give it to your extension. It, it's really that simple. What is the timing of the park you want to do?
We don't know exactly what our plans are going to be, didn't even know we're in that final year of this lease, where we would need to work around.
Right. I mean, I'd tell you, we're going to be leveling those buildings at site, everything to prep it for our own version of moving forward with that park, whether it's a pool as well, but by this time next year, you'll know exactly what your plan's going to be and you'll be working on the budget to get it bid for demolition, engineering, I mean, it's hard to say how far and fast you want to go, but you can go as quick as you'd like.
So the, really determines between 23 and 24, whether it's a one or a two-year, you know, extension. Maybe the benefit to the city, if it was, the, the two-year would be opening up capacity because you're not spending as early.
I'm not worried about capacity right now.
I know, I know you're not worried about it, but it does take one more tenth off of our current debt situation.
I mean, nothing against the fair, I think they've done a tremendous job with this, but I think you delay this further out from where we already are, you have jeopardy of not doing it as much going forward because other things are going to stack up as well.
Right.
You've got that trail bridge staring at you, not many years after that, $2, $3 million, you got the trail system. It's not as simple, we just push everything off. Some things have to get done.
Right.
Repairs, demolition, things like that, so that's why we look out five years, we stack up five years' worth and that's why we're hoping to breathe this year and not have debt to make room for next year.
Right.
So it's completely up to you, I'm just trying to give you the lay of the land from what you've already talked about, what you're looking at and trying to do, so it's up to you if you want to delay another year of that park before we start or do you want to go and aggressively try and work that in? Because that isn't done a year or two either.
Would it also be safe to?
It will be multiple years of phasing just by itself.
Would it also be safe to say that MSA's production of whatever they give us is for that 23 period as far as cost estimates, not for 24 or beyond?
No, you'll have it next fall.
Right.
In fiscal '23, you'll have that, that start and you'll be looking to budget for fiscal '24 to actually be doing something with it.
Would you say that the need, the fair board's perceived need for a two-year extension, is that primarily because of fundraising or is it because of the physical, what needs to happen in that timeframe?
I think it would be both. I mean, it would be highly unlikely we'd be able to get the buildings and infrastructure we need done without another year in there, you know, assuming 2022's going to take up most of our time moving the dirt around and whatnot. You know, we can't just put what we need in place in six months, you know, it takes at least a year, not more. I wonder what the first phase of building number is, but.
So for us to be out there, it could be close to, we need $5 million. And it's, it's not to push that up waiting for the $5 million, it's just that we, we want to make sure that everybody's conscious that we got, we need $5 million. We got $5 million of buildings to put up prior to the fair. If, if it gets down to push come to shove, I don't think anybody wants to go do a fair that's all tents and no buildings for the 4Hers. I mean, our job is, isn't, I'll be honest with you, our job is to provide a facility for our kids, the 4H. That's why we're there. It's, and, and so I think we're doing a very good job on it, but it also takes, when you're building another little city or a complex of this size, of this nature, this is a $20 million project, we're not going to be even close to 20 million in two years. We just want to go for 5 million and get our fair out there, because we can actually, we have all the bleachers already, we own all those, we'll have a track in, we'll have a free stage in, we have a portable stage of our own, we have tents, like you won't believe. tents, like you won't believe, porta-potties. You can see that I'm working this thing through where we can get it all out there, but we do need a place for those kids to show, showcase what they do. If it's a, if it's a non-l livestock, um, project, they need to be inside a building, not a tent. Nobody will go to our fair. So I just want you to keep that in mind. It's not that, and we will do our best. If, if, you know, I'll be here if, if we have to wait another year and when we come back for a, next year, you'll see the dirt done. We might even see a few things put together. But from a building standpoint, that's gonna be really hard. We may put a shell up, we'll do our best, put a shell up. Maybe it's in the arena and we use that as a dual purpose for that first year. It's just, we're gonna be sacrificing quite a bit to put this fair on when we, and I'm not, I, I totally understand, um, James, he makes good sense with that. I just want you to also know there's a, a side of this that we're doing everything we possibly can with what we have to work with and the amount of time now we're down. We lost a lot of years. You're talking to the guy who sat on this, in front of this in 2004 about a new fairground. So, um, I totally get it. I'm not frustrated yet, but I wanna get it done.
I certainly, I certainly want the fair to succeed. But I have to say I'm having a little bit of deja vu from the Champions Ridge discussions.
There's no connection.
So I have some questions. So the, when the, when the project shifted to the current land and Champions Ridge was dissolved, how much money did the fair board have that they had already raised?
Now, we only got two-hundred thousand.
Two-hundred thousand out of that whole deal?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was actually one-ninety. Where did all that go? I can't answer that.
Okay. And who knows the answer to that?
I wish we could answer that.
As far as what the fair got, I mean, that's in our.
No, no.
The rest of whatever was raised.
No, we don't know where the rest of it went to, so.
Okay, that's, oh, that seems like a problem, sort of, but, okay, so you had a hundred and ninety, and now according to the paper, you're, you've got about a million dollars cash.
Over a million, yeah.
Okay. And what, what has been the delay? Because you've owned the property for almost two years, and, and approximately that span of time, the city has made great progress on a ball-diamond complex and raised funds to do that despite the pandemic. So I'm wondering, was it just the pandemic that slowed everything down, that there hasn't been much in the way of development out there? Or what, what's slowing things down?
We are one-hundred percent volunteer. No one working on it.
And we fund ourselves. We didn't, we didn't have any money other than a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
And so I, I noticed that, that you are now the new project manager. Was there a project manager before you?
No. Um, it's, when we shifted from the Champions Ridge to the Bremner County Fair as our own, he basically was our, he's our key guy in charge of this project.
Yeah.
Champions Ridge had a different leadership group within our board and everything else.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought it said in the paper you were the new project manager, but you've been trying to do this the whole time.
I'm a fair board member for twenty-seven years.
Okay, I didn't know if somebody else.
Somebody had to assume the role, and might as well be myself.
Okay, I didn't know if there was another project manager that you would take an over for, or whether it was you.
No.
Okay, and you mentioned that the supervisors haven't really contributed. What, what's their financial stake in this?
So in comparison to the new ball, and by the way, wonderful job with that, you guys got behind it, the City Waverly got behind that project. And what they, what they become, what the, you got to roll an account, you got, you got to be the bank. We didn't have, we don't have that. But now I do have the Bremner County Association that will actually create that line. We couldn't come to, we couldn't go to that banking association without a plan. Well, we didn't have a conceptual drawing of, of our new fairgrounds. When we left the west side and went to the east side, we almost had to start all over again with our design. There really wasn't, we, we couldn't save much but other than building sizes. But now you gotta take a look at that whole new fifty acres, we had forty over there, now we have fifty over here, and, and, and the layout is totally different. So we started from scratch, too. And I'm not saying that the ball-diamonds didn't, but they also had, you, the, the, the ball-diamond also has the city behind it, which is wonderful. We didn't have that with the supervisors. And I wanna be careful there, the supervisors are very good to us on a, on a year-to-year basis. But I thought that they could have possibly had a little more, um, part of this project on the front end. I, I'm not saying that they won't come back onboard, but as of right now, we've had to do our own generate of all funds and figure out a way to get this thing done.
Let me add back to the question of where Champions Ridge money split. The fair, when, when that all ended, I believe, everybody that was donated was asked what they wanted to do with their money, go to the fair, go to the new project, or get refunded. So money went to the new project, money was also refunded, so.
Okay, so that's where the hundred and ninety, gotcha.
What's the annual value of this lease to the city? Your rent times twelve?
So approximately?
Zero, just zero. There's no money.
There's no lease.
We just allow them to use it.
Okay. It's always been a continuation of the lease for ninety-nine, the original ninety-nine-year lease or whatever it was.
And so do you guys have a guaranteed line of credit from the banks to a certain amount?
Yeah, if you read that, there is a estimate already on that staff summary.
I mean, is it in writing from them that they're going to guarantee you a certain amount of money or not yet?
I wish I could say that, but you know, no guarantee as of right now. That is dialed in using First Bank as our key banking, and they are working with the rest of the banks. We don't get to talk to the rest of the association. First Bank is our handler, so they're our, so we're working through First Bank in Waverly here.
I think maybe what would make sense that we can move along tonight is we do a one-year lease extension, we get a six-month update, and we see if we can fly along. And we will know our needs probably in six months or so. And then we can look then in another, I hate to chomp along like that, but I, I do think that, I mean, I actually got a lease right now, I've got, I've got to move out of a place and it's.
Yeah, years not getting in the city at all. I mean, it'll take us that long just to get through where we're gonna be, and at that point in time, you would still have eight months where, so what happened at that point in time, whether there was another year extension or you couldn't make it, or whatever it would be, I mean, we have no problem with a year.
I mean, we've seen the details of both sides of what the exact needs are, because it's hard to see two years right now.
My biggest concern would be approving the two-year lease and then having you come back and say, well, we need one more. Um, I think two years requires us putting the Memorial Park on hold for a year. Changing this to a one-year contract basically allows us to continue as we're going, and you guys can basically show us the progress that you're making. You know, if you've got that fundraising going well, if you've got plans in place, it'll be an easy, I think it'd be easy to convince us to extend that one year to a second year if we're seeing the progress. What we don't want, again, is a repeat of the Champions Ridge where everything, you know, stalls and it's like, one more year, one more year, one more year. If we give you one year, which I think seems ease, an easy pass on this council, then we can wait and see, are you making the progress that we all expect you to make? And I think that getting that second year will be a much easier sell when we're seeing that progress.
But I think too, we don't know how the phasing's gonna go for Memorial Park, so in a year, we could say, hey, you guys are gonna have your fair in a tent or, or, or not.
Well, or we can talk about this side of the park we start, need to start working on, and this side of the park they can keep using or something like that.
And, and I think that's how it's gonna go, is if they need to be accommodated, we may be able to accommodate them, but we don't know that yet. I don't think to hang the, the Waverly taxpayers, what we wanna do here tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate the hard work, it's a huge project. And I, I know you've spent countless hours on it, so I do appreciate that. But I think we have competing interests a little bit because we both, you know, need that property. And, and the kids of Waverly and the county would benefit from a fair, they'll also benefit from a new pool and whatever else we put there. So my concern is, is that if we don't extend the lease, I, I do not wanna see the city villainized as, you know, denying children 4-Hers structures at the fair. Because we certainly want the fair to succeed, but we also have city priorities, and that park is one of them. But I, I totally agree with Matt's proposition that we, um, look to do a one-year extension, reassess. I think it's a great idea to get an update at six months or even three months and see what's happening. So I, I would, I would go for that motion.
I would agree. And I think there's also a chance that six or nine months from now, we may find out from MLA that they're not quite, you know, things aren't gonna move as fast with Memorial Park as we hope they do. It may end up being a moot point that we don't need you to move out that fast or, but there's no way to know that right now, and there's no way to know how your progress is gonna be in six months.
Well, maybe in nine months, we might sit there with a, a, a huge grant or a gift of two or three million dollars. It's po, it's very possible. We're seeing hundred-thousand-dollar checks coming from individuals, individuals of this town and outside of this town, so.
Yeah.
This just begun.
And there's no desire on any of our part to have a repeat of what's happening. Right, I mean, I'm involved, you know, as a little kid, and, uh, my wife's only gonna let me put up with this so much time. It's either this or, um, there'll be no more Bremner County fair, so.
We may get to a point where we're looking at engineering, but if we're not, we're able to do something, I don't wanna tie this in. My personal opinion is that we can't do something that maybe jointly exists with what you're doing. So I agree, Matt, you may have a dual purpose in that fairground to where we're only using half of it, you're keeping the other half and able to actually get a fair done. Or it's part here and maybe you do have part on the new one, even if it's a bad deal, kinda like you did in the West, I mean, because I think you're gonna move faster than you think.
It's our final, final year of the lease, it would look totally different depending on, yeah.
So, so I would move that we offer the fair board, uh, an extension of one year for their lease agreement and that we ask for quarterly updates on fundraising and project progress.
I would second that.
I have a motion to amend Resolution twenty-one eighty, twenty-one, one-eighty-four, quarterly updates on progress and a single year to commence. That would make it March first of twenty-twenty-two through February twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-three.
That's correct.
All in favor of the amendment?
Would quarterly updates work for, yeah, quarterly updates?
Yeah, they can be written.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just come and update us on how things are going.
Or just written, yeah, submitted, written as well, so.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's the, the amendment, so voice vote on the amended resolution, correct, Carla?
That's correct. I'm just wondering if there, if it was three or six months then for the, of the.
Three, three months.
Shepherd quarter on the, on the amend.
I, I missed that.
That's okay.
That's all right.
Thanks for asking. So all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Council discussion regarding the amendment. Hearing done, roll call, Carla.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rathi?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
A vote of five to zero with two absent, the amended Resolution twenty-one dash one-eighty-four has been approved. Thank you for coming, gentlemen. Item number three is the appointment of fire chief for 2022. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the appointment of the fire chief for 2022.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Drinkow. Council discussion, I know we have Mr. McKenzie with us this evening. Do you have anything you wanna offer? That's who's being proposed, so. You don't have to, but.
I'll just say it's been an honor this last year of serving, and we have a good bunch of guys over there and, and proud, um, be an honor to work with you for this next couple of years, so.
Sounds good. Any further council discussion or anything?
I suppose my only question is, um, are we making any headway to getting an understanding of the finances for the volunteer fire department? I mean, I feel like there's a nonprofit organization there that kind of works with the city, but we don't really have a good sense of, say, how much money that nonprofit has. I mean, I don't know if it's a thousand, ten thousand, or a hundred thousand, um, and I just don't know how much information we have about those books.
I don't wanna get too far into that, as it's not an agenda item here. That's a good question, um, so, not that we couldn't discuss it, but it's not on the agenda for such, and I would want whoever's presenting or responding to that to be prepared for it as well. So, um, I'll give that direction to city staff to, to engage with, so. On this item, any other discussion? Otherwise, uh, all in favor of the appointment of Mr. McKenzie as fire chief for 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Item number four is Resolution twenty-one dash one-eighty-five, a resolution approving marketing proposals from Ambridge Marketing for the continuation of the community marketing plan for the remainder of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution twenty-one dash one-eighty-five, approving the marketing proposal January to July twenty-twenty-two in the amount of not to exceed forty-five-thousand, eight-hundred sixty dollars from the Ambridge Marketing of Cedar Falls, Iowa, for the continuation of the Waverly Welcome Home Community Marketing Plan through the remainder of fiscal year twenty-twenty-one to twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Rathi, second by Bergen, council discussion.
I, uh, it doesn't look like anyone is here from Ambridge or from the Economic Development Commission. I think, you're, you're here for the Economic Development Commission?
Well, the direct, I'm the director of the, of the department.
Okay.
And it's a, it's a budgeted, um, item. What we wanted to do, though, is, we kinda developed these in two, two different halves, the first half and the second half, because you wanna see what you wanna do for the second half based on what happened in the first half. So it, even though it was within budget and, and we wanted to show you the things that we were doing with the new, with program in the second half of the year, um, we're doing some geographic targeting, shifting to southern Minnesota, Rochester, Austin, southwest Wisconsin, Cross and Madison suburbs, try to reach a fresh audience. We continue to, to target millennials in that twenty-five to thirty-four range, um, looking to, to get individuals that are at the beginning of their careers and open to moving and perhaps looking for a place to raise family. We're gonna do some marketing through OTT, which is over-the-top media, which plays on streaming TV, uh, as well as digital platforms of Facebook, Google, and Instagram. And then we are going to add, uh, three more testimonial videos are in the contract, so. I think that just the example of what's happening is GMT has hired about a hundred and eighty new employees over the last twelve years. Two-thirds of those were located outside the geographic area.
Twelve years?
Twelve years. Twelve months, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
More impactful that one. Really sell it.
Glasses don't always adjust, right? The, the website and marketing brochure that we provided to them, they actually incorporated into their recruiting, felt that it was very good to use that kinda thing because they were giving people an idea of where they're moving to. Because most of them would apply online or apply and wouldn't get much of an opportunity to be here or see it. So it was a really good sell, sale opportunity. I know the school district's using the website and their testimonial video in their marketing They're also using the analytics to guide the geographic areas to market to, to some extent. Nestle's requested brochures to use at a, at a job fair recently, and a number of employees, employers have linked the website and videos to the recruitment relocation pages on their websites, including Waverly Health Center, UEA, Warburg, WSR, and maybe some others. So we really think there, we're getting a good, um, involvement with our employers. I mean, obviously, everybody's looking for whatever, whoever they can find. I think it's, we're getting some more housing. I know the, uh, the, the eighteen fifty-nine ventures out west has filled their building in large part with people coming to work in this area, whether it be in Butler County or in Bremner County. We can only see that, you know, improving hopefully. So we, we wanna do what our part is at this point. We're, we're using our budget and we're gonna be looking for another budget item this year when we get to the budget.
I'm, I'm glad to hear that because I was trying to look at the, the data that was included in the packet, and number one, I couldn't read it, it's kinda small, and then number two, I wasn't making a whole lot of sense out of it. But I, I am somewhat reassured that, at, at least anecdotal evidence is that this has been of, of some help. And, and I don't know if you recall, when we started this, I was somewhat skeptical, and I, I guess I'm still skeptical as to how much that will help, but if it is of any assistance whatsoever, I'm certainly willing to continue the program. And it sounds like at least a, a number of employers here in town feel that it is very beneficial to them.
Is anybody doing any data collection to see if the people who are hired use these materials?
You know, we haven't, uh, got in the, in the depths with the HR folks. You know, we haven't got in the depths with the HR folks. They do use it and they've incorporated some of their thing, doing the same kind of thing that we're doing and kind of using our way of doing it. But they also reference our website and they refer the website, those folks to the website. And it just gives them an idea about, I mean, it's just like a walkthrough Waverly when it comes down to it, the amenities and the different things with the schools and all that. So it's a really good piece for a lot of folks who are digital now instead of wanting to get some kind of brochure or booklet. We're trying to spread the, the reach around a little bit because we tend to just kind of exchange people with other people in Iowa to some extent, although we have done a lot in the larger metro areas trying to maybe get some people that don't want to be in the larger metro areas and want to be in our smaller community, so. And that's, we're just trying to try different things. We're getting advice from Ambridge, which does a lot of this kind of work for people. And so we're, that's why we decided to make some changes this time to see how it worked.
Yeah, a few businesses that I've, you know, talked to about employment and that I've made reference to this program, kind of like to what Rod had said, and her, you know, if they're investing by sharing the resource, posting on their Facebook posts, that kind of thing, you know, with tags and various things, I'd like to believe that they find that there's value behind doing that, otherwise you stop engaging with that because there is no value behind it, even though it really doesn't cost them anything to do that engagement. So I'd like to think that that kind of tells that story, that they appreciate it.
Well, it costs something in the sense that we're spending forty.
Tax dollars, absolutely.
Forty-six thousand dollars of taxpayers' money to do this. And if we weren't engaged in this program, we could spend that money on something else that may have a stronger effect on recruiting people to come to Waverly. But my sense is, is that the businesses that are involved in this feel that this is the best use of this money at this time for those purposes. And I know that they're, I can speak from personal experience. It's incredibly difficult to recruit people from outside of Waverly to come here. So I'm, even though I'm somewhat skeptical of these kinds of programs, I think that is a good program to support and I certainly intend to continue. I'm thinking back to when I first moved to Waverly, back well before the digital age, that something along these lines would have been very nice for me to be able to check out the town and see what it was like before I ever committed to moving here.
Perfect.
You know, the challenge of marketing and advertising is half of it doesn't work and we don't know which half that is. And I guess, and that's my issue here, I guess, that from the documentation, I'm fuzzy on if this half is good. I think there's good things in it that are coming from it, but I'm gonna vote no on this because I can't, I can't get a hard measurement.
Yeah, that's why, that's why it'd be interesting to have like a marketing class from Warburg or something do a study on this and, you know, poll the people who are hired. And how did you hear about us? How'd you hear about GMT? How'd you hear about, you know, whichever employer? Because it'd be nice to have some outcomes.
I would say, you know, if we could really take note of the things that do work, you know, I'm gonna assume this is gonna pass, that do work at the end of this, you know, I'm guessing we can really tighten that down.
Be nice to get some feedback or some metrics and what was working, what wasn't working. Maybe that's something we can kind of build in here with Ambridge as we go forward.
It's really hard to do the, if you're talking about doing the analytics by actually doing interviews or contacts, that's a, that's a pretty monumental task.
Oh, like a survey monkey.
For staff or to pay for it. And so we understand that. We have really tried very hard to rely on their expertise in working with the folks that helped them too in where to put the place, the placements of these things. We get some anecdotal here and there. I mean, every once in a while, we'll say somebody did really like that and so they convinced their wife to go or something, you know, something of that nature. But it's not very often you really get that unless you go out there and really dig down deep. And the HRs and these places are, don't have huge staffs either, so as far as trying to put that together and get feedback for us. You know, we still have our job board that we're working with the six county area. We think that's an important aspect of it too because that, this actually advertises that board so that people can look at different jobs across the six counties. And so we're just trying to do a package that does what they've asked us to do when it comes to help them recruit. And we don't see any other way to spend the money that we've asked you to spend, so.
It'd be great if we had a bunch of empty houses and we could measure this by how quickly those fill, but that's not the case.
There was eight the other day when I checked, so.
You know, it might be possible to do some kind of a survey of new employees. We get a list of new employees from the, you know, from several of the larger employers and just email out a survey or send them a survey on Facebook or something like that, that just, you know, just a couple of things about, you know, how did you find out about Waverly? Did you do any investigations beforehand?
Most jobs you have to do orientation when you get there, at least at the hospital, you have days of things you're doing online to orient. And so I don't think it would be that complicated to add a three-question survey and incorporate that. So my suggestion the next time you ask for budget money is to incorporate, have Ambridge do some outcome study if you can't find a college class to do it for free.
I think that's important. You know, the question is always, where did you hear about us? TV, radio, newspaper, this?
That's pretty standard.
What was it on TV? Was it, you know, that employer's ad? Or was it our, you know, ad, newspaper? Was it Waverly Welcome Home? Or was it the employer's health one and that? There's a difference there and we gotta, I think, narrow that down, I think, is the conversation that I'm collecting here.
I'd like to think that we can ask the five or six businesses that are actively using it, that if we can get some feedback that way.
And they may already know. They just haven't shared it with us, too, so.
I'd like to, at some point, hear from Ambridge too, I guess. I agree with Matt that half of your marketing doesn't work and you never know which half of it it is, but I've learned the hard way that you still have to do it. And I think for, I think I can speak for most small business owners, this is Greek when we look at this, you know, these stats. But my own person that I pay to do my SEO every month sends me a report and says, here's how many people clicked, here's how many people clicked through, here's how many people called you. And then if she doesn't feel like it's performing the way that it should, she tweaks the words that she uses. And then we compare that the next month. I would assume Ambridge is doing that. And not that we want to get too in the weeds and I'll try to become experts on SEO, but I'd like to just know that they're doing that and they're responding, you know, when we're allocating this amount of money every year.
And I know they are doing that and they're sharing some of that information with us. It's kind of above my pay grade when it comes to IT, but.
It makes your head spin.
It's, they're talking about the hits. They're talking about the important words that you put in your website, which is why the website was, there was so much work done on that website, is to actually do that, to create those kinds of things. And then when you're doing the ads, the ads are taken somewhat from the website. But they do that within the ads that they're putting out, the digital ads, is to actually use those, those words that get you at the top of the page as much as possible. But we don't have the money to get to the top of the page when it comes to searches because everybody's buying those and they're, we're not, we're just gonna get it because if they're really looking at Waverly and somebody's prompting them to look at Waverly, it's easy for them to get to it. And once they get to it, it's easy to go through it and kind of see a quick look at what the community looks like, which is why we don't want to make it so in-depth and so detailed that it's really for those folks that are just taking a look at it and saying, hey, that looks like some pretty good stuff there. Let's look at it more fully, so. We're doing what we can. These are different times, you know, in economic development, we never thought we'd be looking at placemaking and recruiting and those kinds of things as, and daycare and as the primary things that economic developers do. And you, when you hear people talking about it, those are the things they're talking about. And those are the things that everybody's trying to do, so.
Well, women have been talking about daycare for years. So, you know, the world's just catching up.
Hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rathi?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Bergen?
Yes.
On a vote of four to one with two absent, Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-five is approved. Item number five is Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-six, a resolution approving the Leisure Services Department user fees and charges for twenty twenty-two. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-six approving the Leisure Services Department user fees and charges for twenty twenty-two.
Second?
Motion by Drinkow, second by Rathi. Counsel discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Myers?
Yes.
Rathi?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Vote of five to zero with two absent, Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-six is approved. Item number six is Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-seven, a resolution approving change order number one, accepting the park shelters roof replacement project as complete, approving pay estimate number one and approving pay estimate number two as a final pay request. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-seven approving change order number one in the amount of six hundred and twenty dollar increase, accepting the park shelters roof replacement project as complete, approving pay estimate number one in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and ten dollars and approving pay estimate number two in the amount of six hundred and twenty dollars as the final pay request to Yoder Construction of Northeast Iowa LLC of Waverly, Iowa.
Second?
Motion by Bergen, second by Rathi. Counsel discussion, if any.
I'm impressed by how quickly this happened, you know, because it seems like it wasn't that long ago that we were discussing it.
Yeah, as soon as it was approved, they got on it immediately and I think it took them two or three days.
The Yoder way.
Keep that in mind.
All right. Roll call, Carla.
Rathi?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Vote of five to zero with two absent, Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-seven is approved. Item number seven is Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-eight, a resolution accepting the public improvements for whitetail bluff addition. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-eight accepting the public improvements for whitetail bluff addition.
Second?
Motion by Drinkow, second by Myers. Counsel discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rathi?
Yes.
Vote of five to zero with two absent, Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-eight is approved. Item number eight, Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-nine, a resolution approving the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company for the twenty twenty-two Adams Parkway Bridge inspection. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-nine approving the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Mason City, Iowa for the twenty twenty-two Adams Parkway Bridge inspection for the not-to-exceed fee of three thousand six hundred and seventy dollars, including expenses.
Second?
Motion by Myers, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion.
It seems like we just had this bridge inspected. How long ago was it?
Two years ago.
Two years, yeah.
And we haven't inspected every two years?
It's required.
Okay.
This one is done in the hot, this one is done in the hot year because they coordinate the work with other bridges in the region that require a snooker truck. It just saves the money by helping spread the cost.
Okay. And we just resurfaced the bridge three years ago?
It was twenty nineteen.
That long ago. It was three years ago.
And then we had the utility service along the side that was repaired. So there's a lot of action.
Do you remember when we had the construction downtown and that was when that bridge got closed for resurfacing?
And you were in that very scene. Traffic was a mess.
I remember this very well because we were fielding law calls. Breamer Avenue was under construction seventeen and eighteen. And then we turned around and did the Adams Parkway Bridge in nineteen and it opened on June twenty eighth of twenty nineteen. I remember the day very well.
It was a good day when it opened.
It was a good day.
Yes.
Let's hope the inspection goes well.
The month before wasn't so great, but that was a good day.
All right. Roll call, Carla.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rathi?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
On a vote of five to zero with two absent, Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-nine is approved. Item number nine, Resolution twenty-one dash one ninety, a resolution accepting the Eagle Ridge Drive and Cul-de-sac Extension Project is complete, accepting Baker Enterprises cashier's check as performance guarantee and approving pay application number eight as a final payment. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution twenty-one dash one ninety, accepting Eagle Ridge Drive and Cul-de-sac Extension Project as complete, accepting Baker Enterprises five thousand dollar cashier's check as performance guarantee and approving pay application number eight in the amount of thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-three cents as the final pay request to Baker Enterprises of Waverly, Iowa.
Second?
Motion by Bergen, second by Rathi. Counsel discussion, if any.
So we just hold the cashier's check until the?
Work is done.
Work is done and then tear it up? And if the work's not done, we cash the check and do it ourselves?
Well, five will do it, but it'll get done.
It'll get done and they'll take care of it and they'll get their money back.
Okay.
Makes me look at puddles a little differently.
Yeah.
You know, to the untrained eye, that just looks like a puddle and it's actually a problem.
I've got a puddle on a street near us that I'd like to get fixed, but I don't have a five thousand dollar cashier's check, so.
Yeah, and the difference is this one showed up before we finalized the project. Most puddles are showing up on roads twenty-eight years or more.
All right. Roll call, Carla.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rathi?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Vote of five to zero with two absent, Resolution twenty-one dash one ninety is approved. Item number ten is Resolution twenty-one dash one ninety-one, a resolution approving purchase of a TruX Flex Two No-Till Drill Cedar from P&amp;K Midwest for the Vegetation Management Division of Leisure Services. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution twenty-one dash one ninety-one approving the purchase of a TruX Flex Two No-Till Drill Cedar from P&amp;K Midwest of Waverly, Iowa for the purchase price of nineteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars for the Vegetation Management Division of Leisure Services.
Second?
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion.
So ten thousand of this cost will actually be covered by a grant?
That's correct. Yeah, ten thousand from Living Roadway Trust one.
I was sad there was no picture attached. It's nice to have pictures of the equipment.
I'm sorry. You have to get a picture of that.
It's all right.
All right. Roll call, Carla.
Myers?
Yes.
Rathi?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Yes.
Vote of five to zero with two absent, Resolution twenty-one dash one ninety-one is approved. Item number eleven is the third and final reading of Ordinance ten ninety-six, an ordinance adopting the city code of the City of Waverly, Iowa. Entertain a motion for that.
I'll move approval, third and final reading of Ordinance ten ninety-six, an ordinance adopting the city code of the City of Waverly, Iowa.
Second?
Motion by Snyder, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion, if any. Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Rathi?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
On a vote of five to zero with two absent, the final reading is approved of Ordinance ten ninety-six. Item number twelve, discussion of board and commission council liaisons for appointment on January third. I'm just probably gonna keep this brief tonight. If you have any considerations as far as what works for your schedule, I know Ms. Bullford cannot continue her service on the Breamer-Waverly Law Board. I don't know if anybody else can, you know, step into that. They meet in the mornings. If not, I don't know what city code allows if I need to sit on that to fill it in or.
Is that Public Safety One, the, like, the second?
Yeah, there's two of them, yeah.
Right, there are two members. There's a five-member board, two members are board of supervisors, two members are city council people, and then a third.
County at large.
Person at large. The meetings are pretty short, usually twenty minutes, maybe.
The longest ones are budget, but those are usually less than an hour or two.
Or when I'm chairing the meeting, they tend to get a little long.
But Sheriff Pickett does a very good job of having everything coordinated along with the county supervisors. That's the big one. I have no problem with where the council members are currently seated on their boards and commissions unless somebody else has scheduling conflicts with meetings and that kind of thing. That's not the upset of the apple cart. It's basically this one. So, you know, if you want to change ones.
Can they move it at all or are they set in stone at nine?
That one is really set because it coordinates with the county supervisors' meetings.
Right.
So they have that meeting and then they, that's why they're usually short.
Supervisor meetings, I think, are ten.
Right.
So that way they can kill two birds with one stone.
Because they have to advertise and publish their agenda. Because they have to advertise and publish their agenda, so they have to, because there's two of them at that meeting, which is a supervisor's quorum. So they have to publish that agenda, so it's a consolidated agenda that says they're gonna be at that meeting, then county supervisors, and sometimes they have meetings after that with Board of Health or whoever, so. There really isn't flexibility.
That's a tough time.
Yeah. So I don't know if it's, I've sat in on those meetings several times and actually have extended a vote to allow things to move forward. I think on one occasion we had to do that. I think we were short a person, I can't remember.
Well, the quorum would be three, so we always have to be careful to have a quorum.
Exactly.
So if that second council position were open, the biggest issue would be that, well, two issues. First issue would be that I would be the only person representing the council on that board, and the second issue would be it'd be much more difficult for us to have a quorum if there were some other people missing. So, other than that, we could probably get by with not having two council people on it, but I don't think that would be ideal.
Well, I don't think we can not have two representatives of the city.
Is there any other time that the supervisors are there, besides Mondays?
I don't know.
Not usually, other than...
I think the bylaws issue, I think it's nice you have two members present, so I mean, we'd have to look at the bylaws to change that around.
But I mean, is there any way they could change their meeting to another time when they're in the building? You know what I mean?
Why they couldn't, I mean, it's up to them. I don't wonder.
They're held at the...
My thought were not that we didn't have a second member, that, but that if we had a second member that was not able to attend the meetings, or very few of the meetings, you know, that it would probably, you know, we'd get by that way, but that's not ideal, as I said.
Yeah.
Wanting to have somebody who is on the board that would really be able to attend the meetings most of the time.
And there really isn't, I know the title of it, Law Board, you think it's really the building.
It's maintenance of the building.
Yeah, it's carpet, HVAC.
Well, if they moved it to 8:00 AM, if they would move it to 8:00 AM, I could probably do it, but I can't do it at night.
I doubt that will happen.
I could do it, but I don't have a desire to not be on the other ones I'm on.
Right.
So I could pick it up.
That's why this is a discussion at this point, that we can look at the bylaws and see what's permissible. I guess my thing, if it says that there has to be two people from the city, you know, to alleviate some of that pressure, if it's okay with the council, I would be willing to...
I mean, if you're able to do it and don't mind picking it up.
Yeah.
I can do it, particularly, it appears that most of their meetings are fairly short.
Very short, yes.
Right.
Well, I assume it's at the law center.
It is.
Yeah, so it's not a big deal.
So the thing is, is there could be some other shuffling, you can talk one-on-one against amongst yourselves, if, if there's something that somebody else is interested in or whatever, we'll continue this discussion on the third to actually, you know, itemize what that is.
Okay. I guess I feel like I'm just getting my feet wet on the other ones that I'm on, so that's why I'm not in a hurry to jump off of those, but I can pick it up if, that would be helpful.
Okay. That was all that I wanted to just open that up on behalf of myself and Ms. Bullford, so. Moving forward with item thirteen, approval of the mayoral appointments, read these off. Joel Johnson and Randy Niedorf reappointed to Leisure Services, terms expiring December 31st of '24. Sonia Bodine is, Bodine, I always get that, I apologize, is replacing James Carver on the Leisure Services Commission for a term expiring December 31st, 2024. Brief explanation there, that was the gender balance thing. We had more, we were one short of females, so we had to make that change. Ron Roos and Jerry Hanker reappointed to the Golf Course Commission for terms expiring January 1st, '25. Emily Niedorf reappointed to the Electrical Utility Board of Trustees, term expiring December 31st, '27. Doug Bowman is reappointed on the Municipal Housing Commission for a term expiring January 2nd, '24. Peggy Rothie is reappointed on the Municipal Housing Commission for a term expiring January 2nd, '24. And Seth Engelbrecht is replacing Clark Wilhelm on the Municipal Housing Commission for a term expiring January 2nd of '24. On that one, Mr. Wilhelm decided not to continue his service. So those are the approvals. Any council discussion at this point?
I guess I just have one question, based on some of the email communications that came out last week. Is it safe to, well, nothing's ever safe to assume.
That's okay.
Could we request that with this new calendar year starting, that we get something really concrete in writing in terms of this policy that you put in place when you became mayor, and including exactly what the process is and deadlines and all that?
Absolutely. Glad that you brought that up. I don't want to get too far off of agenda here. Yes, lack of a policy, I'll just be honest with you, there isn't, you know, we have the application process to field people that are interested in serving. I'm gonna work with city staff between now and our January study session to come up with some ideas, along with Mr. Drinkow. He's been instrumental in council procedures policy before, so I'm gonna employ him as well to come up with some ideas of solidifying that process and the intent of the application. It could involve, you know, readdressing term limits, those types of things into the future as well, so.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Anything further?
I will move approval of the mayoral appointments.
Perfect.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion beyond that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion carries. Section I is reports from boards and commissions. Number one, Civil Service Commission minutes of October 13th, 2021. Item two is Civil Service Commission minutes of December 7th, 2021. Item three is the Bremer-Waverly Law Board minutes of November 8th, 2021. Item four is the Airport Commission minutes of November 11th, 2021. And number five is the senior calendar of December 2021. All received into the record. Vivinda J., staff update, Mr. Bronner.
Garrett has a very brief update for us tonight.
Thank you.
Yep, so we were open last week at the golf course on Wednesday. We ended up with 35 golfers before the stronger winds came, so. Anyway, yeah, so a pretty good turnout for December 15th. Also, I just wanted to let everyone know that we now have a PGA professional working at the pro shop. Jordan has finished his schooling and now has that title of PGA professional.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's all we have tonight, sir.
Thank you. We'll start to my far right, Mr. Bergen.
So, in Tuesday's Waverly newspaper, there was a wonderful letter to the editor by Phil Trimble that I would encourage people to read, but he really talked about this Christmas season and remembering people who are alone, people who are struggling during this Christmas season, talking about, you know, we see people's Christmas cards that all look posed and perfect and remember that everybody's got their own issues going on, and just reach out to those people around you, especially those people who might be lonely. And I think it's a really important message this holiday season. And aside from that, I will be at the poorhouse after the city council meeting, if anyone wishes to come and discuss city council business, and join me for a beer.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Ms. Rothie?
There was an important discussion today at the County Board of Supervisors meeting about EMS, Emergency Medical Services as Essential Services. The Board of Supervisors had a lot of input from the community in favor of this, and so they are also in favor of it, coming before the voters as a referendum on whether we can tax to provide that service. The Waverly Health Center currently subsidizes the ambulance service to a large degree and also provides ambulance service for other counties in the area that unfortunately cannot staff volunteer ambulance corps. So I think this is a really important issue, and I hope that the public will let the Board of Supervisors know that they're in support of it, and then will come out and vote for it when the time comes. Thanks.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Myers?
I just want to echo what Ms. Rothie said. This is an issue that I think has been under most of our radar for a long time, and our EMS services in rural Iowa are at a breaking point. It really is truly life or death matters, and I think we don't pay attention to it until we need them. And there are frequent cases in our outlying communities where they don't have anybody to respond to medical emergencies, and consequently, the Waverly crews are getting pulled to those communities to cover for them. And it's gonna be really, really important when it comes to a public vote, that everybody supports maintaining the services we've got.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider?
Keep my comments very brief, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Drinkow?
Yeah, for those who might be watching this meeting on the video feed, you may have noticed it. Through most of the meeting, I haven't been wearing a mask, and I want to just make a couple of comments about that. My concern, wearing a mask, for me personally, is I feel it's more difficult for me to communicate with a mask on, and for people to understand what I'm saying and be able to see my facial expressions while I'm doing that. That's a personal decision of mine, and it's based on the fact that I've, I've had both of my COVID immunization shots and my booster. My wife has had both of her, she has been re-immunized now for COVID, has had both of her shots and has her booster scheduled. And I feel fairly confident that the limited amount of exposure that I have here at the council table is not of a significantly high risk that it trumps the ability for people to understand my communications, for me to communicate with people. Most of my friends say that I would communicate better if I just didn't say anything at all, so I might agree with them at times. So I just want to make sure that people don't misconstrue this, because I think mask wearing is still incredibly important. We are in the middle of a growing pandemic, and there are a lot of people that are not immunized. I think people should wear masks, I intend to wear masks when I'm not, it's part of the discussion here at the council table, if you see me around town, I will most likely be wearing a mask. And I, there's absolutely no reflection on the people who are here on the council table that are wearing masks, I applaud their concern for the safety of themselves and the others. So I hope that people will understand the reasons behind my decision, and if we get to a point where the danger becomes to such an extent that it will be necessary to re-mask, I'll re-mask, so. And I, secondly, I wish everybody a very happy and very safe holiday season.
Thank you, sir. And I'll take a moment to, as soon as I got a couple agenda items in and looked over, I apologize for not giving you the moment at the beginning.
That's quite all right.
Didn't want to break precedents, but I wish you would have interrupted me and said, hey, I have a word. Oh, yeah, but that's okay. Gretchen?
All right, it's been an honor to serve as the December guest city council person, and I'd just like to say happy holidays and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Sorry you're getting kind of a third of the meetings with us not having a study session, but you can always tune in, so. I had just a couple things. For those library goers, they've got some New Year's Eve to-go kits with games and celebration materials for New Year's Eve. They'll be available tomorrow while supplies last, so they're, that's some of their programming. I want to congratulate our police department's newest graduate from the Law Enforcement Academy, Mr. Johnson, and his future endeavor getting into FTO and then off to, on his own. One raising concern with my element of employment as a bus driver here in Waverly, there's been a significantly high amount of stop-arm violations in and around our community, just a gross amount of stop-arm violations. Those aren't reported to our police department, they're reported to the State Patrol, so that's why we don't hear a lot about that from our local police department, because those violations get reported to them and followed up and cited summons by those, by the troopers. So I just want to give just a shout out that let's do our part, we don't need a kid getting hit this close to the holidays. I know we only got one more day of school before the holidays here tomorrow, but even beyond that, we never need that to happen, so please be respectful. On our three-lane configuration, you do have to stop both ways.